To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in indivisal.
Next matter under consent item is a motion to approve the zoning minutes from November 12th, 2024.
So move.
Okay. On the phone say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, matter is approved. Under Article Four, public hearing, we got, I think, three matters that are public hearings. First is case file number 2024-14Z. This is open to public hearing to consider approval of the request by the owner to rezone from single-family residence three district to a multiple-family residence one district of an approximate 0.3214 acre tract of land being lots one and two less the northwest part of block two, block 56, Scarborough Place and Crestview Edition, and block 19 southeast of block four. This property is northwest of the intersection of North Lauderdale Avenue and West Sixth Street. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The applicant, No Tran, is requesting a zone change from single-family three residence district to multifamily one residence district on the above-mentioned property. The applicant intends to use the property for a one-story building with three residential units. The subject property is located northwest of the intersection of North Lauderdale Avenue and West Sixth Street. The site is currently designated single-family three residence district and is the location of a church. The applicant, No Tran, is seeking a zone change for the future development of a three-unit residential building. It is to remain a single-family story, um, single-story building. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan, the Planning Division provides the following comments. This request is inconsistent with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is surrounded by family, single-family dwellings and zoning on all sides, and approving multifamily zoning in the center would be considered spot zoning and is inconsistent with the planning objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan and zoning district. The nearest multiple-family zoning designation is approximately 1,000 feet away. Libability, the proposed zoning would have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. It would add more density, parking, and traffic in an area designed for single-family housing on large lots. For reasonfulness, the proposed zoning district would not facilitate a reasonable transition between line uses of varying intensities and would create a conflict to the existing line uses in the area. The Planning Division recommends denial due to the request being inconsistent with the development objectives of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? In pre-meeting, there was discussion that this might be a question or would be a question of spot zoning if it's approved.
If it's approved, it would be spot zoning, only zoning that lot within a single-family residential area.
Spot zoning generally is illegal, not something that you want in the city?
It's, yes, it does not comply with the zoning ordinance with the city's comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance.
What is the exact process that would be needed in order for that entire area to go multifamily or some other designation for development in there? Because my opinion, that's one of the most blighted areas in Odessa, and just to the east of that is the medical district, which they've come in and done office buildings, and there's some multifamily not too far away, north of Eighth Street there, up to Odessa High School, there's plenty of multifamily. They've come in there and they've put apartments in there, made the area a lot nicer than it is, and that area on to the west, all the way to West County Road in this particular neighborhood is not good. The houses in there, most of them are dilapidated rental houses, and there's spotty in there with old daycare centers, and just to the east of there, there's apartment complexes all in that other area. And what is the procedure in order to get that area some development started in there that will bring that neighborhood up again and start having some development, which I know the city is looking at trying to get some areas near downtown where there's, where they start seeing some renewed development?
In the past years, I've gone through one of those rezonings. It was a request from city council, a city council member. What we did is we went ahead and notified all the surrounding property owners or other property owners within the area. First, we did an analysis on the location of what was proposed to be rezoned. We looked at the, this traffic, we looked at the, you know, the density of the area. We went ahead and notified the surrounding property owners within 200 feet of that whole subdivision or the areas that were rezoned. We do have to notify and send postcards with their request to either approve or protest. We do take those into consideration, and we present them to the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as city council.
Okay. Well, that area is really no different than the other, the other areas around it that have already had that happen. In fact, it's a worse area as far as blighted properties through there than the other areas that have already seen that happen. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor or against this proposal for this particular item, I'm just saying that that whole area needs some attention, and we need to rezone that where you start getting some new development in there. So whatever that procedure is, I'm not sure.
You have a question, don't test what you're asking, and that is, what's the easiest or least zoning designation that would permit a multifamily development on that lot? I mean, you start with general, which can do anything, but probably not the right designation for this whole area because it is residential.
So general residence zoning district would allow either single-family or mobile homes or modular homes on the property.
So then you go up from there, and then you got single-family, and then is there anything between single-family and multifamily?
So the only one that we looked at was what was requested by Mr. Tran, which was the multifamily residence. That would allow single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, three or four, also special housing arrangement types, and of course apartments.
Okay, how many, how many living units do you have, have to have before you get from single-family to multifamily? Could you put a duplex on that property?
With the multifamily residence, yes. You can place a duplex, oh, for single-family, no, sir.
So you couldn't take that existing building and make it two duplex, two units?
No, no, single-family only allows for just the single-family residence.
Single-family, and then any more units, it's gotta be multifamily.
Correct, yes.
So if we decided to go against your request and approve this, that would be a faster way to get it before the council, correct? And then they can make that decision?
You can make that decision whether you approve or not. It's still, whether it's denied or approved, I still have to move it over to city council.
Is there a question?
Yes.
Right, now, I will note that this is public hearing. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? All right, thank you, we may come back to you. Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience today that is here to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? If you want to speak in favor of or oppose it, now's the time to come forward and give us your opinion. If you would, just tell us your name when you get here.
Yes, my name is No Tran, and I'm trying to turn the place into a multifamily unit, make it look better.
You're the applicant, and you want us to approve?
Yes.
Multifamily.
Yes.
Then you want to do it with an existing building?
Yes, with the existing building. Yes, sir.
How much pain and suffering will it cause you if there's a delay for a couple of months on the approval?
That should be fine.
So you would try to work with the city, if we try to work something out?
Yes. Yes, sir. Yes.
We're a recommending body, we're not the final decision makers. We are interested in what you're doing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else today that is here to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Seeing as there are none, I'll ask the commission if we have any questions of staff. Seeing no other questions, I'll...
I do have a question. You're saying to delay this for a few months. Are you requesting, are you indicating that to move it forward to city council?
Well, I was curious as to if we reject it or approve, what impact would that have on the applicant?
Okay.
Is there a timing issue? Are there finances that are pending that?
Oh, okay.
On the outcome of what happened today? Just want to make sure there's not any urgency of what happens today.
Okay.
And if there is, I'd like to know.
Okay.
So if we, so what kind of issue will, if we did change this over, if we requested, like, over to general, what kind of, what would that do when you reached out to everyone around that? What's the same deal? You have to send out the letters to everyone in that area?
Well, the request cannot come from this board. It would have to be a director from council to speak to our director and maybe decide or review the area first. A direct request, I would have to make it known on the, on our minutes, however, it would have to still move to city council.
Is that a motion that we would need to make?
No, you can make it as a, you know, as a request, but not necessarily, it's a condition.
Yeah, I think if we approve it, it goes to city council, then?
It will, yeah.
It's on them to decide what to do with it. Yes, sir. All right, and there's our legal counsel?
Yeah, I think y'all as a board, y'all can pretty much decide whatever you want, y'all can make the decisions and ask the questions, whatever you need, yes. So, I mean, you wouldn't have to send it directly to the city council, you could deal with it here.
When you say deal with it here, what?
Yes, they're asking if they can request the change of zoning.
I believe you can do that.
We can request it?
I believe you can, you can make that motion here, and then the city council to approve it.
Okay.
Yeah, you can put that in a form of a motion.
Okay, okay, good.
It won't affect that zoning ordinance? Ordinance is already in effect?
We, he's saying that we can request that zoning ordinance, and then the city council could approve it, so we could request the zoning to change to general?
Yeah, you, the board can request that.
Well, no, general, general doesn't work.
General, no, what, general will only allow...
General is the least, but it's gotta be at least multi.
Okay.
There's no, there's no in-between, it's gotta be.
Multifamily, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, y'all have the power to do as you see fit.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'd move that we...
Okay, let me close the public part, turn the commission, see if there's further discussion or a motion of some kind.
Okay.
I would move that we recommend to the council that that area be approved for multifamily units from wherever the medical center district ends, all the way to West County Road in south of Eighth Street there, and north of Second Street, all the way to allow multifamily in that, those subdivisions.
I'll second that.
Right, as a matter of discussion, your motion, rather than approving the current application, your motion is...
No, can we just take that one motion like it is, and then I'll make another motion to approve this?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what, but you're asking the commission, the council to consider...
Multifamily.
Multifamily housing in a larger area, not necessarily approving this one.
That's correct.
But that way, if you have that approval from council, it's not spot zoning.
That's right.
And then I'm gonna approve, I'm gonna make another motion after this motion. Can I do that?
So you can make one. All right, we got Gary's motion. Everybody understand the impact of that motion?
You as a, you as a board, y'all have the power to do this, to ask council to make that change.
Right, and I think that's what the, Gary's motion was, we're gonna ask the city council to review this and consider expanding the request for multifamily, not just that lot, but additional area so that creates a situation where there's not spot zoning. This may take some time, but it's a possibility. Is that your motion?
It is, it is.
Connie, do you second that motion?
I do.
Have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? All right, now...
Now, can we consider this one?
I need to ask, you know, we've made a motion on that, are we able to make a second motion?
Regarding this?
Regarding that, because I think what Connie's gonna do is say she wants to approve the...
This, that's on the...
Yes, given that the city council will take your recommendation?
First.
Make it for multi-use, that would be part of the motion that you're backing.
Now I'm fixing to make, then I'm gonna, yes, now that...
That's what Connie's backing.
That's what I'm fixing to do.
Am I sure we do it right?
Yes, that's what we wanted, if city council approves the previous motion, then we approve this for this gentleman here.
Okay, that's what I was gonna do, correct? Okay, okay, okay.
And that's your motion?
I move to approve case file number 2023 dash, twenty, case file number 2024-14-Z.
If it's approved, if Gary's motion is approved.
That's pending approval by city council.
All right, second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Okay, going on then, we have another matter of public hearing. This case file number 2024-15Z, this is a public hearing to consider approval of the request of Landgraph, Cratchit Associates on behalf of the owner, John Burnett Construction LLC, for a zone change from future development to single-family two on a 12.95 acre tract of land located in section 16, block 41, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, properties located on the south side of East Ridge Road and approximately 200 feet west of Milano Drive.
Thank you. The applicant, Landgraph, Cratchit Associates, on behalf of owner, John Burnett Construction LLC, has applied for a zone change from future development district to single-family two residence district on a 12.95 acre tract located in section six, block 41, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey, City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. The purpose of the request is to allow residential development in the area. The subject property is located on the south side of East Ridge Road, approximately 200 feet west of Milano Drive. The site is currently designated future development and is vacant and undeveloped. The applicant, LCA, on behalf of owner, John Burnett, is seeking a zone change for future residential development in the area. The single-family two district allows single-family homes with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. The property is required to be platted prior to construction. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan to evaluate zoning amendments, the following comments are offered. For comprehensiveness, the request is consistent with the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is adjacent to a single-family two properties in existing single-family homes. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on this site or surrounding properties. Any future single-family two residence district development will be consistent with the development in the area. The proposed zoning will facilitate a reasonable transition between line uses of varying intensities and will not create a conflict to the existing line uses in the area. And I'm here for any questions. Oh, the Planning Division does recommend approval due to the request being consistent with the development objectives of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Approval of the zone change will be subject to condition A, which would be to adhere to single-family two residence district zoning designation standards. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff?
We have, actually, let's see. We don't have any protests or approvals. Just a moment, I apologize. We do have, let's see, 21 notices were sent, zero were denied, one was an approval, and there were zero returned. I do have an approval notice here, and I'll go ahead and pass it to you.
More important, there were no protests. Thank you. Okay, again, this would be an appropriate time to ask staff if you have any questions. If there are no questions of staff, I'll note that this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience today that we should speak in favor of or in opposition to this proposal, please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public discussion on this matter. Turn the commission for either discussion or a motion. Make a motion, we approve case file 2023-15-Z as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Matter is approved. Going on to case file number 2024-97P, this involves a motion approving the staff's recommended conditions for replat of lots four and five, block 15, replat of the estates of Shiloh, second filing. This property is located in section four, block 41, T2S, TNP Railway Company Survey in the City of Odessa, Ector County. It's generally located south, south side of Wilmer Drive and approximately 260 feet east of Grand. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant and owners, Landon and Kayla Hobbs, with consultant Newton Engineering PC, are seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This request has been routed to all respective city departments and has received no objections, and therefore, the planning staff recommends approval of the replat of lots four and five, block 15, replat of the estates of Shiloh, second filing, subject to conditions A through C. And the planning department is now open for any questions. Thank you.
No protest on this one, notices given, no protest.
Did we have any protests? There were no protests.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Got off lucky, thanks. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience today that's here to speak in favor of or in opposition? Please come forward at this time.
I apologize, I'm not here for, for or against, I just want to make sure we don't have another mistake, that this is listed as Newton Engineering, but also as SWH, and I want to make sure that we don't have cross-platforms again like we did a few weeks ago.
It should be Newton Engineering as the developer.
I just wanted to make sure since you have a shadow as well. It's the right one.
It does, yeah.
The description one, it is right.
All right, anyone else in the audience that'd like to talk to us? Seeing no one come forward at this time, I'll close the public part of this discussion, look to the commission. Is there any discussion within the commission or a motion?
I move to approve case file number 2024-97-P.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, we'll move on now to case file number 2023-93P, and cases from hereafter or not public hearings. This first matter is a motion approving the staff, with staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat of Castle Ridge Estates, third filing, being the same 12.95 acre tract that we saw earlier, that was owned by John Burnett Construction. This property, same location, East Ridge Road. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, John Burnett Construction LLC, attention, John Burnett, with applicant LCA, are seeking to primarily plat 34 lots for the purpose of future residential development and associated zone change from 2024-15-Z has been submitted to rezone the property from FD, future development district, to facilitate future development on this lot once platted. We have sent out notices and received no rejection. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of Castle Ridge Estates, third filing, subject to condition A through H. We're now open for questions.
Okay, I have a question that doesn't involve this pad itself, I think it, it looks like there's a drill site to the south of this property, and I did not drive this, but in the, during that subdivision, there's a street of Verona Drive that seems to cross and go over to Castle Ridge, second filing. I'm, want to make sure that drill site has access. Hand handling.
Oh, yes, that one should have access. There is a access, yeah, there is an access road, let's see, I'm sure what you mean.
There's a brick fence.
And it's an active drill site?
Well, I think it's a drill site, well, I've seen it in the past.
Just a path?
No, it's, it's...
I've seen it in the past.
There's not a pad.
It is not, yeah.
To the drill site, though?
Yeah, does Verona actually come down?
Also, Benicia, under the, on the high line, right away, going up that way, you can get all the way from Verona all the way over to that playground in Castle Ridge, back there behind it.
So we're not land-locking anybody?
There is no land-locking, no.
Other question? All right, so any questions of staff? This part's not a public matter, so turn the commission over. Comments, questions?
Well, there's a difference in the number, I think it's probably, I think you read in 2023, and I think it's 20, probably 2020. It's on miscellaneous, it's a little different, but...
2024, I think.
Yeah, it's 2020.
Do we have the volume map?
Yeah, and I think it was read, but I don't know whether that matters or not.
It's 2024.
Okay.
Joe Tucker, the public works, I had several comments that aren't listed in the conditions, but we do need them addressed and added to the conditions.
Okay.
One was, I'm asking for a note on the plat that there be no, excuse me, direct access from the alley to East Ridge. We don't want traffic exiting that alley directly onto East Ridge. I know they're planting a fence there, but it needs to be clear that that's not allowed. I think the rest of them we can address with the engineer, but there's some questions that we have as far as drainage, but we can work those out. But we do ask for that access restriction. And as far as that encore easement, I don't believe that's public access, that's encore property. They own that in fee. So that's, that's for their use, not the public's use, or the oil company's use.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burnett, I know if you have a concerned look on your face about that access?
I'm sorry?
You may have a concerned look on your face regarding the denial of access, are you okay with that?
To deny access?
The alley? The, coming from the west going east, there's an alley right next to the Tesco easement, and I think the comment was that there would be no access.
Oh, yeah, I don't care if there's, I thought y'all were worried about being able to get to that drill site, I was just saying that...
Separate issue, separate issue.
No, on the, yeah, on the conditions, we're gonna deny the access on each ridge on that alley as a part of the condition.
Right, I'm just saying you can't access from the alley to get onto East Ridge, which you're gonna have a fence blocking.
Right, yeah.
I just want that clear on the plat.
The fence?
No, that there's no access.
No access.
Your access to East Ridge will be from the two streets.
Correct, yes, 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 there'll be, we're gonna, the fence is gonna continue along East Ridge like it is in the Castle Ridge subdivision, it's just a continuation of Castle Ridge.
Exactly, that's what I'm asking. Exactly, that's, that's what I'm asking.
All right, I think we got that cleared up, now, okay, here comes somebody else.
Did we close that, did you open the public hearing?
Yeah, there was a public.
There's no public hearing.
Yeah, there's.
That was, with the pot on both sides, the corner and stone bottom.
So it doesn't matter, so. I'm going to, I'm going to go and make a motion, Jimmy, give me.
Yeah, I think it just goes south.
Jimmy, you want to close it, so I can close, there's no public hearing or something? We don't have.
All right, I will note that, that, uh, this is not a public hearing and that we have had some discussion on it. Is there a motion from the commission on this matter?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-three dash P with the addition of the change marking I with the restriction of denying access on East Ridge with that alley.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Matter is approved. Now, case, and noted on, on that that there was a mistake in the case file number, it should be twenty twenty-four dash ninety-three. That's written on our information, it was twenty twenty-three. Now, we're going on to case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-four P, this is a motion involving staff's recommended conditions for a proposed preliminary plat at Bingham Addition, fourth filing, in addition to the City of Odessa, in section thirty-three, block forty-two, township two south, Texas Pacific Railway Company Survey. Property generally located southeast of the corner of the intersection of West Murphy Street and Bankhead Avenue.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. Uh, the maps and plat were incorrect on the file, so, um, Shayna will be passing out the correct, um, maps and plat. Um, the applicant and owner, the, uh, the Missiana of Valencia with consultant S W Howell, uh, Incorporated are seeking a primary plat to create one lot for ownership purposes.
No, that's.
We sent out notices and received no objections. The staff recommends approval of primary plat of Bingham Addition, fourth filing, subject to condition A through F. We're now open for questions.
Are there any questions of staff? I think you looked over the plat.
Remember, this was the bad man.
Hmm. Yeah.
Is it going to be residential?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, I think there's.
They have not indicated whether it's going to be residential or commercial. Most of the time, um, let me see.
It's a lot of district, district.
This is in the ETJ, or is it, uh, no, south side of Interstate, no, I'm sorry, it's not in the ETJ, but no, they have not indicated, um, whether it'd be residential, it's for ownership purposes, uh, depending on the surrounding area, um, let me see, what is that?
Murphy and Ford?
Bankhead.
Bankhead, um, it could be either commercial or residential.
Got all the new changes dimension of the lights.
I'm sorry?
Two lots are becoming one lot.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, two lots are becoming one.
Yes.
Any other questions of staff?
Move for approval, case file twenty twenty-four dash ninety-four P is presented.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. All right, now, we're case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-five P, this involves approving, uh, the staff's recommended conditions, a proposed preliminary plat of V and O I twenty Development Edition being sixteen point eight eight acres of land situated, uh, in section abstract five ninety-three, block forty-two, township two south, uh, A seventy, Texas Pacific, uh, Railway Company. Generally located south side of I twenty service road and approximately thirteen hundred feet east of South County Road, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, V and O Realty LLC with consultant Maverick Engineering are seeking a primary plat to create three lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of primary plat of V and O I dash twenty Development Edition subject to conditions A through G. We're now open for questions.
Does anyone have any questions up staff?
Is there a road in between them? That's what they had access?
Uh, you're asking about access, um, it looks like there is an access easement, it's on the east side?
Mm-hmm.
They don't have a reader on it, so it's a lot.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it looks like on the east side, there's an access easement, at least a lot, lot two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
That line.
All right, is that, the question is, um, will lots two and three have access to the public, to the public?
Um, let's see.
Obviously lot one does to service road.
Mm-hmm.
It appears that there's some kind of easement on the east side, but I don't know if it goes from lot two into lot one.
I think they're proposing an access, um, to the east side, through the east side.
A lot two as well?
Uh, let me see, for lot two, it goes all the way down.
The back light at the back, yeah, all the way through at the back.
Probably at the back.
Yes, to the east.
Yeah.
That vague, that vague, yeah.
Sorry.
The very back vague line.
This one right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they are proposing an access easement coming down the east side of lot one that will connect to lots two and three.
The very, very back, right?
Yes.
Kind of hard to tell, but it, but the easement is going north to south all the way.
Yes, it's on that dotted.
And then.
And there's a leg over to serve lot two.
Yeah.
It also.
See how it goes all the way over.
Okay, thank you.
A little bitty thin line, it's hard to tell, but yeah.
Okay, but a good question.
Yeah.
We don't want to landlock anybody, I've, I've got a lawsuit in my office, so we're one of those. Okay, all right, uh, we've had a little bit of discussion, uh, is there a motion from the commission?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-five dash P.
That's presented, is there a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, matter is approved. We're now on case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-six P, this property's in the ETJ, this involves approving the staff's recommended conditions, a proposed preliminary plat of one-way addition being a twenty-eight point three-two acre tract of land situated in section forty-eight, block forty-four, T two S, T N P Railway Company Survey, generally located east side of Southwest Cliff Road and approximately fourteen hundred feet north of West Interstate Highway twenty, west or north. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. The applicant and owner, Omar La O Silvia Yunisky, with consultant Lucini and Murks, are seeking to plat ten lots for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of the primary plat of one-way addition subject to condition A through E. We're now open for questions.
I think the answer's obvious, but, uh, a year or so ago, seemed like every other plat had, had a long road on it, they were throwing in turnarounds for fire trucks and stuff, uh, we've got none of those issues involved here, it's in the ETJ, and we've got plenty of room, if there is, uh, an emergency vehicle at the end of that, there is a turnaround.
That is correct, uh, it is in the ETJ, but there is, um, the main, the road that runs through it is at, uh, a sixty, if I'm not mistaken, sixty-foot road, so that would facilitate any type of vehicle. Any issues, since this is a preliminary plat, um, any issue, we do, uh, send them out to all the interior departments, all our city departments, there were no comments from them, so, um, I mean, we have nothing on their side that they voiced their opinions on.
There's some safety issues that we're looking at and we'll make sure that we're doing it right.
Yes, and we have reached out to Ector County, um, the only, uh, items that they did indicate were, um, that they are confirming that there is a, let's see. Actually, no, the only thing that we had was from Ector County nine one one, which they confirmed that it's, it is a sixty-foot accessing utility easement, um, private road, um, recommendation is consideration to be given to assign the street proper a unique name, but other than that, there's nothing that, that might protest on their part.
Because these are commercial lots, right? These are commercial buildings, commercial buildings.
Are going to be, they haven't indicated yet, I'm thinking that they're, they can go either way since it's still on the county.
Okay. They look like commercial lots to me, but I was just thinking they look like they're going to put commercial buildings on them, but I could be wrong.
And this is a preliminary plat, so anything we can, any questions you might have, we can go ahead and address them with the final.
Any other discussion?
No.
Uh, motion?
Make a motion, we approve case file twenty twenty-four dash ninety-six dash P in the ETJ as presented.
For second?
Second.
Have a motion two seconds, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Uh, for those in the audience who are still awake, we're on case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-eight P, uh, this involves a motion approving staff's recommended conditions for the replat of Hertzog subdivision second filing, being a replat of the older quarters of lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, block one, Hertzog subdivision of block seventy-three, original town of Odessa, uh, this property is located on the west side of Jepson Avenue. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner, the Ector County Republican Party, with attention to Donna Kellum, as well as with the consultant L C A, are seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed to respective city departments and has received no objections and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of Hertzog subdivision, second filing, subject to conditions A through D. We are now open for questions, thank you.
Does this have the approval of President Trump?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
This matter have the approval of President Trump?
I'm not sure on that matter.
All right, but we're asking for, uh, notice that we're asking for approval that Donna Kellum has authority.
Uh, yes, we do have those documents. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, no questions.
Move for approval, case file twenty twenty-four dash ninety-eight P is presented.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor say aye. All right, all right. And it looks like we're down to case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-nine P, uh, involves approving the staff's recommended conditions, the replat of ASCO addition being a replat of lots one and two, block two, Perkins addition, second filing, lots, block one, block one, Shoreline addition, and the producer's supply and tool company each track, all located in section seventeen, block forty-two, T two S, T N P Railway Company Survey, uh, generally located northeast of the corner of the intersection of Turner Highway and Moore Street. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner, Brax Wright, with consultant Higa Reed and Associates Incorporated, are seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has received no internal objections and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of ASCO addition, subject to conditions A through D, and we are now open for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right, no questions, any discussion or motion?
Move to approve case file number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-nine dash P.
Second, anybody?
I have a second.
I have a motion second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Uh, case file number twenty twenty-four dash one hundred P involves a motion to approve with staff's recommended conditions, replat of lot ten A, block ten, royalty heights addition, in addition to the City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas, property located on the south side of Fifth Street and approximately one hundred ten feet west of Hill Creek. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the applicant and owner, Alexia Matos Tito, with consultant S W Howell Incorporated, are seeking to replat to create one lot for ownership purposes. This replat request has been routed to respective city departments and has received no objections and therefore the planning staff recommends approval of replat of lot ten dash A, block ten, royalty heights addition, subject to conditions A through E, and we are now open for any questions. Thank you.
What is that little parcel at the back, that triangle thing? What is that?
Looks just like have a lot angles.
So, this property, um, previously, so what they want to do is they're wanting to place a mobile home, I'm thinking, on that property that they're replating. Originally, uh, we only had the plat for these three lots together, but, um, in our documents, we did in, we did show that there was a portion missing, uh, from those other two. So we didn't have an actual, we only had like a meets and bounds description of that portion that they're replating now. Um, I think it was, okay, go ahead.
Wade Howell with S W Howell, Mr. Sims, that's an encore easement, uh, former TXU that's back through there, those large power lines that run through, that's why that triangle is there, and then the junkyard that is there is just crawled into it, so they exist there and it's all locked off.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
For residential?
Yes.
Do we know the fall line of that power line? Because they're going to have, I don't know, you know.
I don't have it on me, I believe that they've got it, uh, Encore has not been responsive due to all the hurricanes and the timing of all this, we can't seem to get anyone to get back to us with answers.
All right, any other questions up staff? If there are no questions, I stand ready for a motion.
Move for approval, case file twenty twenty-four dash one hundred dash P is presented.
Somebody got a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Have a motion adjourned, go home.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Anybody in favor?
All right.
Oh, scared.